Board members. Ready? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming to the Select Board meeting tonight. I wish you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. And we are honored tonight to have Senator David Waters with us tonight. He must steal a little bit of his thunder, but he is Dover, Barrington, Rollinsford, and Summersworth. And he's going to come forward and give us a little presentation, and then later on he's going to open it up for questions. I do ask that you state your name for him, and please be polite and no attacks, just ask your questions and we go from there. Senator Waters, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. It's so nice to be here, and thanks for inviting me this evening to hear your questions and concerns about what we've been doing in Concord. You know, I have scheduled my kind of office hours now that the session is over, but I usually do those during the day, and it was awfully nice of John to say, hey, it's awfully hard for some people to get out during the day, but I will be in Barrington at the library tomorrow, and it would be good to see other folks there as well. And, you know, we ended our session on May 23rd, and I got like a school kid running from the school going when the bell rang, and I've been painting my house ever since. But I had a chance now to reflect a little bit on what we accomplished, and I would really like to say first and foremost, we had a good session. You know, we really, on the tough stuff, we came together across party lines, the governor, the House, the Senate, and that's what counts. I think people see the mess in Washington and say that we ought to be able to get things done, and I'm really pleased that we really addressed some of those big issues. Now, I gave you a couple, some materials. I wanted to talk for just very briefly about some of the big things that we did and some of my major interests. I did give you a list of my prime sponsored bills. I was co-sponsored about 60 more bills, and had 17 of my own bills were prime sponsored, and you have those there. And I also have a little bit about Medicaid expansions, impact on Barrington, and then a very tiny print list of the projects relating to Barrington and the 10-year highway plan. I don't have anything to say about that, and I'd love to have some questions in here of what concerns are on your mind. And I just think, you know, because of the moment we're in with the opioid crisis and healthcare issues, that I do want to say a word about that, because it has been the last three or four years, all hands on deck. We're trying to do everything we can. New Hampshire is now second after West Virginia for the per capita fatalities, and we know what a crisis has brought to all of our communities. I regularly talk with police chiefs in my district and with EMT folks and hear about what they're seeing. And so we really have tried very hard to do something about that. The primary vehicle for us addressing the opioid crisis really has been through Medicaid expansion. We were able to pass Senate Bill 313. In particular, there are some 249 current Barrington residents in Medicaid expansion. This is for people who have up to 135% of the poverty level and a little higher for families, and there are probably several hundred others who have been in the program sometime since its inception. What this does is it brings hundreds of millions of dollars into New Hampshire to support healthcare, and it also means that the state doesn't have to pay hundreds of millions of dollars to the hospitals for uncompensated care. But primarily, it's the number-one way we can have a healthy workforce. This year, the new Grand Estate Health Protection Plan includes a work requirement. I've always supported work requirements. I think that the point here is if you're healthy, you can get yourself involved in your community and get back in the workforce and move off this program and help your health insurance through the exchanges or through your employer. And what the changes are this time is that we have moved to a managed care system. This, I think, will help with cost controls rather than have people buying from private companies on exchanges. We're not used to managed care system to do that. We have the work requirement, and then importantly, we continue the coverage for substance use disorders. This is 7,000 people in this program, about 50,000 people in the entire program, and 7,000 of them are receiving some kind of rehabilitation or serve other services for substance use disorders. So that's a front line for us. If we didn't have this program, I don't know how we'd take care of folks with that. And related to it, we also, through this program, were able to put more money into substance use disorder treatment, particularly ramping up the available recovery centers, both inpatient and outpatient services. The church groups, the private organizations have really stepped up in this area. SOS, other groups have provided more treatment, but we still need to do a whole lot more for that. We also put some extra funding into transitional housing for the mentally ill, people suffering from mental illnesses, and there's a lot of overlap between the substance use disorder and mental illness. So we're trying to provide more housing funds there, and that should help a great deal as well. We also are fully funding the alcohol fund since it was set up, you know, 15 years ago. 5% was of total sales of alcohol through the state liquor stores. We're supposed to go into substance use disorder prevention treatment, and now it actually is going to do that, and the money will be transferred into funds that will help fight the opioid crisis. So that was big. I mean, it was a huge, it was very difficult for us to put together a bipartisan group in both the House and the Senate, or it goes with the governor, and we got it done. And I think New Hampshire has a unique program. It's going to help us have a healthier workforce. And this is something I've heard so much, the Business Industry Association, employers all around Barrington, elsewhere, saying, we need healthy workers. We need workers that can come in, can do the job, and that's one of the main demands. So I think about workforce development as well. Another area that affects Barrington is the 10-year highway plan. I really focus like a laser on transportation. I'm on the Senate Transportation Committee and have been all three of my terms when I was in the House interested in transportation, because, you know, how are we going to have people get to work and come up here for recreation if we don't have good roads? And, you know, drive around Barrington, I must say, I'm amazed how you keep your roads going. I mean, you just do such a great job. There's so many roads in Barrington, and the state needs to help out and do its part as well. So you have the projects that are listed there that Barrington has in a 10-year highway plan, and I am glad to say that they're in there and they're funded. We passed the plan. The governor hasn't signed it yet, but he will shortly. But we did more. In the last day of the session, on House Bill 1817, we took surplus funds that were coming in because of the Trump tax cut. A lot of corporations are bringing money back home, and that's swallowing our tax coffers, so we thought, put that where it would be the most good. We put an extra $20 million into the state red list bridges account, and then we also added $10 million for municipal bridge projects. Now, I don't know exactly where you are in terms of municipal bridges, but what I understand is that talking to folks kind of behind the scenes at DOT, that it might be possible, instead of just being in the list and in line, that if you have a project ready to go, you might be able to jump the line. So if you have something ready to go, whether it's that culvert or something else, let me know, and I'll try to find out just how they're going to distribute this $10 million, because that's a good message to the municipalities, a recognition that while it's downshifting, we try to do something. Another area of my interest in economic development has always had to do with education. I'm on Senate Education. Retired last year from 40 years as educator over at UNH, and so I've been focusing particularly on workforce development and education. I have, for several years, had Advisory Commission on Career and Technical Education. I passed a bill to permit sophomores to take career and technical education, which only the juniors and seniors had before, and this opens up a whole new world of possibilities. Students can finish their program in sophomore and junior year, and then maybe senior year can be an internship, or some programs like in engineering are three-year programs. So this should be good for that system, but we're not funding it. But, you know, you're a sending community. I know transportation tuition, it says in the state statute, we're supposed to do 75% of those costs. We've been doing 59% to 62%. And a lot of communities are putting a cap on the number of people they will send because they can't make up that difference. I had a sit-down with the Commissioner of Education, Adu Blue, today, and I've worked with them on this before, to say, put in your budget that full funding. Put all the money that's needed for that, and I'll see what I can do when we do the budget next year to make sure that comes out to the community, so students here who want to go into career and technical education can actually do it. As you know, I've also been very involved in kindergarten. It was my bill, Senate Bill 191, which got the additional funding for kindergarten. We put an additional $11 million into all-day kindergarten and hope to top that off with the keynote revenues, and the keynote revenues are coming in. I don't know if it's going to be quite enough to fill the $7 or $8 million gap to get us up to 100% funding for your full-day kindergarten. Right after the bill passed, I talked to the governor and said, look, we ought to just do this as adequacy funding next time. Let's just do it regardless of keynote revenues. Let's do it, and let's maybe use the keynote revenue for school building aid or other kind of local aid. So that's something I'm going to be working on as well. And just to touch on another area that I think is related to Barrington, I've always tried to do a lot of work on protecting our environment in this area. I mean, what better example is there from Barrington with its forests and its ponds and the protections that have been done here are really extraordinary, because you recognize the value of, you know, why do people come to Barrington? It's just a great place to live, it's a beautiful environment. There's a lot of concern about water quality these days, about PFOAs. We even heard of those a few years ago, and now they seem to be everywhere. And I'm kind of looking at the big picture, too. I've been working very hard on trying to build out the electric vehicle infrastructure. We're way behind other states on charging stations. Electric vehicles are coming. Auto dealers are concerned that we have an infrastructure for charging stations so that the people buy these cars, they can get them charged up when they're out and about. If somebody from Massachusetts wants to drive up to Conway or up here, they ought to know that they can go online, find out where a charging station, and get themselves home for that. Just to conclude, too, I always, you know, we get down to the weeds. I know, I'm sure it's like with all you in the budget cycle. You're down here like this, you know, and you're counting every penny and wondering if this plow truck can be replaced or which road you can do. But I think it's also important to stand back and say, you know, where is New Hampshire going? Where is the economy going? And what's the role of government in that? I was the co-sponsor, I was at the bill signing the other day, for the Army project. Have you heard of this? It's Advanced Regenerative Manufacturing Institute. Dean Kamen has started this, and he could have gone anywhere in the country. He won the competition among 50 other people who had billions of dollars from the Army, US Army, get $80 million in startup funding to do regenerative materials. Now, the Army is interested because they want to be able to grow bones, internal organs, eyes, skin for soldiers who've been grievously injured. But the potential here is that this regenerative materials company, and there are a couple that I saw what they were doing now, they're constructing human hearts, they're constructing cartilage, lung tissue, that they can regenerate with the people's own DNA and own tissue so there's no rejection issues, and help people become healthy. This is an extraordinary future that we see, and it's going to happen in New Hampshire. This is going to be billions of dollars of industry. It's going to be tens of thousands of people employed here. So it's a huge impact, and those are the kinds of things we really have to look at. What's the next technological revolution? We did it with the mills here. We did it with defense industries. We've done it so many times before, and so New Hampshire, I hope, will be on the forefront of that kind of change as well. But finally, you know, I think one of my roles in Concord is to make sure that the free-market economy, the entrepreneurial spirit is not hindered by overregulation, and that we really do need to make sure that we're always looking at red tape, always finding ways to streamline things, and to help people, whether it's tax policy. I had a bill in that would try to give tax credits to businesses that want to put their equipment in our CTEs or in our schools to train folks to be ready for jobs in their industries. So there's a lot of those things I think we need to do, and that really is the New Hampshire spirit as well. So I just want to touch on those few things, and I know there's a lot of concerns that you all have in terms of things you're facing in Barrington as a select board, and anything you want me to know about.
Senator, I thank you very much for your comments. And the gentleman you're referring to is Peter Cook. He's our road agent.
Yes.
And just the board, have any comments, please?
One of the things I'd like to see happen when we're talking about the opioid crisis here in the state of New Hampshire, many of the children, the secondary effect on the children of adverse childhood experiences and events that they're experiencing. So while we're working towards recovery and we're funding for their parents, at the same time, in a holistic model for the family, we really should be working towards making sure that the children are not experiencing many of the adverse childhood experiences that they're currently experiencing. That's one thing. The other thing is, I think it's great, I did know about the Army project and the creation of human tissue. I happen to have a brother who is a heart transplant recipient, so this hit near and dear to me. But one of the other things I'd like to say, when we watched Silicon Valley as it, you know, really expanded, the cost of housing then became more prohibitive to those with very little income, and I'd like to have the state really consider paying attention to those people at the lower end of socioeconomic scales, being sure that we're encouraging cooperative tiny living parks or cooperative environments where there's owner-owned mobile home parks. Anything like that that would be able to provide affordable housing to people at the other end of the economic scale would be something to consider.
Well, thanks for those. Go ahead.
And the very last thing was in reference to economic, I'm sorry, electric cars and the economic impact of not having people who own them in Massachusetts able to travel to parts of New Hampshire. I don't know what the regulations are at fueling stations, but it would only make sense if we could provide some type of tax break to the Irving stations, the Shell stations, should they choose to provide that type of electricity station.
Well, thank you, and I'll try to real quick, just, and we can always follow up with that as well. On ACES and childhood, you know, I've visited Hope on Haven Hill. We have some more money in here to provide through the Medicaid expansion, particularly to provide programs for families and for young children who are being affected, not just the ones who are, you know, neonatal syndrome, but also just the family environment and experience. I co-sponsored with Nancy Stiles in the Senate, the bill that requires drug and alcohol education at low levels annually in our schools. And that passed two years ago as a response to this crisis. But ACES is just a huge issue. I've tried to do some work on early childhood. I worked with Save the Children Action Fund Foundation about trying to do a social impact bond and to try to get funding for early childhood education. We're one of six states in the country that doesn't do early childhood funding from a state level. I decided last year, we had to get kindergarten done first, which is very hard up in Concord to talk to people about what we had to do for early childhood until we fully funded kindergarten. Well, we've basically done that now, so I think we really need to do more in this. Home health visits, Nikki Haley, you know, Governor of North Carolina, she put $300 million into home healthcare visits for prenatal through age three, and it's having incredible results on the health of those children. In terms of housing, I mean, oh my goodness, I had somebody come down my street. I don't live in the best neighborhood of Dover, right? You know, until I get my painting job done at my house, you'd think, why is one of the ones that's been abandoned? But I'm getting there. And going door to door saying, do you have anything to rent? Do you know anybody who wants to sell a house? And that is certainly a sign that housing is getting unaffordable, and the property taxes in Dover out here, it's creating increasing issues. So I've been trying to get more money through our capital budget into affordable workforce housing, and we got three and a half million into the capital budget, which, you know, working with Senator Bradley and Senator Feltes, we got that done, and now there's an additional million dollars going into the affordable workforce housing. Now, to focus towards mental health, but, you know, that is a sign we're trying to do something. I'd like to see that increase tremendously. Also, in terms of helping folks out, the Community Loan Fund, I mean, my goodness, what a fabulous job it does, helping parks' residents buy their own, buy their property and take ownership. And just, what, a few weeks ago, in Barrington, you know, and it's been done in Dover, and what a revolutionary plan that is, and to enable people to stay in their communities. Because we can't have a situation where everybody who, you know, is basically working for a living can't live in Barrington, they've got to live, what, an hour north from here? On the electric vehicle stuff, just run through them all. Look at my Senate Bill 575. 517 sets up a commission. It says, we're going to need a commission, has everybody come together? The Volkswagen settlement money, Everstore, put $40 million, Massachusetts, you know, there's a lot of people who want to put money into this, but we needed to have some regulation about where can you park, what kind of station do you have, make sure you have an open port protocol, so it's not just Tesla, not proprietary. But I have in the bill also that we should have the Public Utilities Commission look at ways, because right now it's illegal to resell electricity, they're turning another eye on it, so I have language in there that says that they can include this in their tariffs without making anybody who has a charging station become a utility, but also to look at demand pricing. And then finally, I have in the commission, one of the things we're supposed to look at is tax credits for businesses, for apartment complexes, for other people to get tax credits for willingness to install these kinds of stations. So I hope we can get some stuff done.
Couple of items that you talked through. I was just curious, I didn't hear any touching on the VA, and I know that's been a pretty touchy item for a couple of years now, especially after they had their flood and were kind of shut down there a few years ago, so they started using the state hospitals to, or some of the other hospitals to help pick up the load and share some of that burden.
It's just shameful what happened over in Manchester, the treatment there, and to wonder what it got to me was that, you know, the ways that didn't have a separate entrance for women who weren't wanting to come in because they were getting help with having been sexually abused, you know, and they had to walk right through the open area there. I mean, just so many things. And thank you, Senator Shanin, Senator Hassan, Governor Sununu, for everybody for standing up and trying to get something happening at the federal level, and now we have some action now. My dad was a Veterans Administrator doctor for 50 years down in Newington, and I remember from the 1950s on, you know, and I watched, actually watched the conditions at that hospital deteriorate for many years through his career. And I, you know, there's things we can do as a state to just insist that the federal government take care of folks. It's just such a sacred responsibility, and I, we've got to keep the pressure on. We really do.
The other item was that I recently heard that they were talking about the overhaul of child services, and with the opioid crisis, the impact to child and family services and CASAs, Guardian at Light Oats, cases like that, is grown to the point where there is not nearly enough people to actually fill that void, and with some of the kind of general mismanagement that's come out of it, they're talking 10 years to fix that?
You don't have that time, huh?
No, and that's for children. That's just not acceptable, so I'm just curious what you folks are doing from the state level to help push that harder.
Well, you know, isn't it awful that it took a couple of children dying before people finally went over there and figured out what is going on?
Yeah, I don't know if they call it awful. It's unacceptable.
And get rid of the director, and, you know, David Booton, the former state senator, was asked to chair the task force to look into this. Very good report. He was head of the search committee that hired, has hired a new director there. There is money now in the budget bills we passed to increase staffing there. The Sununu Center issues, I hope we're going to be in a better place on that as well, but this was bad. This was really bad, and I really do think that, you know, we are paying really close attention to this in Concord, and the governor, too, is just, the need to hold people accountable.
Is there pressure being applied, because, like you said, the 10-year timeline is really concerning to turn that around?
Yeah, I think we're going to, I think nobody will find that acceptable. I think it's going to be every month, every year, every budget, calling people and saying, what are you doing? To make sure that we're improving that system. And there really is, I mean, the commitment up there in Concord right now is just palpable on this, and I share that.
And then the career and technical education. I know the governor specifically has been into my employer, meeting with the owner of our company, talking a lot about the lack of math skills that people have coming out. And in a STEM world, math is really a critical part of that, and what more can be done to enhance and drive that, the importance of the math and the sciences in that aspect of it? Is that part of the whole career technical piece?
Yes, yeah, and I've worked pretty closely with Representative Lad, who's Chair of House Education. He's just a math champion. You know, he is so insistent that we do things on this, and he's been a good partner on my Career and Technical Education Advisory Commission from the get-go, and we have written together some legislation. One thing that we did last year, and in the second bill this year, is to say, the fourth year math, we meant it when we said that that could be covered in an applied course in career and technical education. We heard that some math departments and some sending schools were saying, despite the fact that the CTEs give you credit for having fulfilled the math where you need it, right? You know, the kind of math that you're using on the job and in your training, that they wouldn't say that, they were saying it doesn't count for your fourth year math credit. Well, we fixed that. We just passed a bill that would take care of that. But the whole STEM initiative, the robotics program, we put more funding into it, and I think that what Representative Lad and I would like to do is to have in the adequacy formula, as we have for third-grade reading, that there be an enhanced payment for third-grade math skills, because, you know, if you can have the math good in the first through, you know, in the lower school, well, if you can get people, you know, if you can get students really there, then they'll be ready to look at STEM fields, and they'll be ready to continue that in high school. And I actually, I talked a lot of this with Commissioner Adu Blue in our meeting today about, you know, why can't we have more of these math courses integrated into what students are actually doing in this, you know, in the pay system and in the CTEs? And he's very, very, very supportive of that, and I hope we'll be able to make the changes we need.
And then the last item I had, with kindergarten, it looks, from what I see, with 11 million, you're about 65% funded on that?
Maybe a little more, but yeah, around that, yeah.
So the early intervention piece for children is so key to how their entire educational career goes, which I think kind of alludes to some of what Tracy was talking about, where even when you look at early childhood intervention and getting, the quicker that you can find out that somebody has a need or an assessment, the faster you can get them going, and they're better off there.
And it works. And it works. The interventions work.
So I understand kindergarten is, the focus on early childhood intervention and catching it as early as possible, the two, three, four even, makes a big difference as to how a person develops and how successful they are from that educational standpoint?
This is a big one for me, as I said. You know, my kindergarten bill simply said, full adequacy in kindergarten, put the other 18 million in, and then they go over to the, we passed that almost unanimously, what was that, unanimously, it's in the Senate. It gets over to the House, and there's a lot of folks in the House don't believe in early childhood education, don't believe in kindergarten, and so it was a real struggle to get where we got to. But, you know, I've always thought in my work in the Senate that half of all really is better than none, and we made a huge step in getting where we got, and we've got to finish the job on that, and then we've got to start addressing early childhood. We just have to do it.
So then the last item I had, probably, yeah, sorry, I have a lot. It becomes a challenge from a budgetary standpoint, is if you look at the way the legislation is written, is that your base budget for the next year is always based on the prior fiscal year's approved budget, which means the budget is always established to go up. It really should be a zero-based budgeting system where you come back and you redo it year after year and you look at what you're doing, because by basing it there, you can always bring your, your default is always set to increase, and you can always bring it down, but the problem is when you start adding in salary action and things like that, it very rarely goes in the other direction. And if you look at most towns, Dover is a perfect example of that, where they just built this new school, and now they're trying to figure out how they're going to deal with the taxes. the tax implication. And being a former resident in Dover, that was part of our reason for moving out of Dover, is our taxes had done nothing but climb in the five years that we were there.
Yeah, I disagree with Andy on that. I just think that to understand there are two sides to that. And the other side, of course, being that it should be local control. And the local voters have the option of voting a smaller budget if they want to do so. And that's something that's always possible. And if you're going to change the definition of default budget, it should go back to the voters and require 60% approval, just like it did when SB2 was first adopted. You shouldn't keep changing the rules from what the voters originally approved.
Well, I think the voters, if you put it back in front of the voters and they understand exactly what it is, especially when you look at a school budget side where, and a perfect example is in our case, we're going to have our school, our building paid off pretty soon, but that's part of the default budget now, so it means that money is always...
No, that will come out. Yes, that comes out of the default budget.
It comes out, but if you look what they're rolling into it, every year it gets larger and larger and larger because you're building the cost side.
No, that comes out of the default budget. That's part of the default.
Because it's a bond.
You take out the bonds. Because it's a bond outcome. It comes out. But what my point is, is if the voters voted, that's one thing, but the legislature shouldn't impose it on all communities after SB2 was voted with one definition and suddenly change it to another definition from the legislature. We wouldn't want them doing that on a lot of other issues.
Well, just on this particular one, I agree that, you know, it's your responsibility to set your local budgets because you set the tax rates. Dover and some of those are both tax cap communities and has had big implications, but it sent a clear message of what people expected about that and upset about their property taxes. I am nervous about when we start challenging you all what to do with your budgeting, especially since we've been downshifting now for 10 years, right?
All I'm saying is loosen that so that the town truly makes the decision. Which aligns with what John's saying, is you're really letting it go so that the town makes the decision.
There was one bill that, you know, he brought up, the unbilled positions would be taken out of the default budget. And that was interesting to me, but I hear you, I do. And I, Dan, you have?
Well, I don't always show a time with the board. We should have a better understanding about that budget on school and how the falls up. It's not going to save us money, but that's not your problem. I just want to bring it up later, Dave Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just my last comment is, I feel like it's all of our problems because we all bear the burden of it. So things that we can do that better control our tax impact is, to me, Andy, are powerful.
Another point on local control, and I'm big on local control, is the, who calls off an election in the middle of the snowstorm? And I know the Senate and the House ended up disagreeing, so nothing got done. But I mean, I'm strongly of the opinion that it should be the local officials. I thought that the House compromised with the moderator needing the selectmen's approval to do it would avoid, you know, the loose cannon kind of situation. But also, they would best be aware of what the local road situation is. I know there are towns near here where the roads can be horrible on one side of town and okay on the other side. So how is somebody in Concord going to know what's going on with the road condition?
Well, I agree with your position, and I voted against the Senate version. I thought the House had it about right and that let it be a local decision, but inform the Secretary of State so there can be consistency of information. What was wrong with that? Now, we had a situation where the previous Attorney General thought that that was the constitutional role of the local officials. Our current Attorney General thinks, no, the state has the authority. So stay tuned and hope there's no blizzard next to your meeting day.
Close eye. Moving on, is there anybody in the audience that has a question they'd like to ask the Senator, please? Please.
Ron S. H, last week, the governor said New Hampshire has more money than it knows what to do with. Is that true, for one thing? And for another, if so, what's going to be done with all that wealth to help the communities and the people of the state?
I think there's a lot of things that you would think of what we ought to do with it, like maybe restore an local aid and putting some funding into our university system and our local schools and our roads and so forth, or putting more in the rainy day fund, which we did and I've always supported. I'm on capital budget. Our bond rate is tied to the amount we have in the rainy day fund, and it is going to rain again someday, folks, right? It definitely is. I was in the legislature in 2010, 2011, and the brutal cuts we made because we, the rainy day fund was empty and that was painful. I think what the governor is trying to refer to was some criticism that he took because we did pass House Bill 1817, which finished our payment that we needed to make for the hospitals for uncompensated payers that was under court order. Did things for mental health that was under court order that we needed to do. Funded the state workers' contract, which was, you know, a year without a contract. We needed to do that, modest raises, some cuts to health benefits. We needed to do that as well. And then the funding I mentioned for the state bridges and for municipal bridges. And then put $10 million into the rainy day fund. I thought that was a good way of dealing with the fact that we had built up some funding because of additional revenues coming in because of the national, of the Trump tax cuts. And so I think that that was the context of that. The governor puts forward very frugal budgets. You know, I've enjoyed working with him. We had some disagreements, but you know, he understands in an answer way. If we don't have money to earn, still have extra money, I think our first responsibility is to try to get it back to the taxpayer one way or another.
Anybody else have a question?
Well, thank you all again.
I have one question.
Oh, please do.
I have been working with the veterans here in town for many, many years. And one of the questions I have is that when a veteran has a disability, and they go down to try to apply for some of the items that the state recognizes that he should have, the word they use is a permanent. The VA now has started a system where they have given you the disability, but they're not giving you the word permanent. So the individual doesn't qualify when that particular department of the state is asked to fulfill that request. So I would like to have you look into that and maybe go from there with it.
Thank you for bringing that up. I've been aware of this, particularly because when I was on fishing game in the House and then the bill we just passed now to deal with the issue that if you're going to get the pre-hunting and fishing license because you're a disabled veteran, that it doesn't have to be that permanent category. It can be other, the other percentages as well, which is the right thing to do. And let me know the particular ones, because if we have to change statute, we're going to change statute.
It's when the individual gets to 100%, the VA has got to a point where they give him 100% and they've reevaluated every year. And because they're being reevaluated, it's also being done for, in case the individual should pass, then that 100% stops going up. Whereas if it's permanent, then it would continue to go up and work with the widow or widow.
Well, there's some logic to that, isn't there? And I will tell you that I supported very strongly a couple of years ago, the increase of the veterans' property, enabling the veteran property tax credit. I know Barrington took advantage of that, and we tried to increase that again this year, enabling municipalities to increase that amount. And please, please let me know, because this is something, these are the things I think is one of our biggest responsibilities, is 110,000 veterans in this state, one of the largest percentages in the country. I was really so happy we could get the Rute 9 bridge name for Allen-Jennison. You know, and these are the kinds of things, that's symbolic, but it should mean that we understand what our duty is to the veterans.
I know the Jennings family is very, very grateful for that, and it was expressed to you before through, I belong to the Legion, so I know that must take care of. The last question I have for you to work on is, I've worked, I've talked with Jackie Silley for years, and the only thing I would be asked is that, on the death certificate, if the question could be put on the death certificate, is the individual a veteran? Yes or no? And then if so, have the word country there for the block? Because what happens is there's a lot of veterans, not just in this area, but throughout the state, that have the service of internment, but they are also entitled to the military appreciation. And they're not getting it because sometimes that question is not asked by the funeral director. But if that was on, if that was on the death certificate, they would have to ask it. And then one of the other groups, whether it be PFW Legion or some other group, could provide the service for them. So it's just something I'd ask and look into it.
Great idea.
If we do it, it'd be super.
We can put a bill on that, and I'll always say the idea came from you, okay? Thank you all.
Does anybody have any other questions? Senator, I want to thank you so much on behalf of the board, our town employees and everybody else in the town. Thank you so much for coming by, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
And please don't be a stranger.
Let's keep the conversation going, and I'll have my office hours tomorrow in Barrington, but you've got my cell phone number on my card. And anything comes up, I know John calls me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next appointment we have is Chief Williams on the station opinions, options rather.
All right. So to start, thank you for having me. I just wanted to come in and give you a brief, not a complete detailed PowerPoint update of where we've kind of gone at the police department with, you know, spacing and things like that. So thanks for having me. It was March 26th that I had come in and spoke with you on direction. You know, we go off campus looking at police department alternatives or stay on campus. We chose to stay on campus. Select person here that had brought up a legitimate concern that took, you know, a lot of time from March to today to figure out and get answers on, it was the septic system. Would the septic system support the additional load on the lot if we were to do a permanent addition, the size of the addition? And the answer is yes. There's pages and pages of emails. Select person was a part of that email string, and he agrees that yes, it can be done. Without getting into like a one-hour septic system debate tonight, just know that it's in writing, it can be done from SMP or SMT out of Concord.
No way.
No, no way, no way. No replays, I'm sorry. Thank you. Chamber system, new system, let the old system fail, all that type of stuff is for another day. It can be done. So from there, what I wanted to do is, you know, there's two schools of thought. Short-term solution and planning, which is about three years, sometimes five. That's really where the private sector focuses, short-term, three to five. And some even call that long-term for private sectors. Government seems to historically look at decades, 10, 20. If you look at the Dover Police Department, you honestly think they're going to look at spacing in the next three to five years? Same with Farmington and Durham that just did this as well. They're not. They're looking at decades. And I think you can do that government-wise because it's more predictable. I don't think I'm going to sign any type of private contract that's going to suddenly double the police department in a week like the local restaurant just did, that I may have an interest in. But it's those types of things, private, three to five years, government is more 10 to 20. So coming in here, I wanted to look at a short term. Maybe we're not always right in this government, right? We'll look short term. So I did. I met with John Hawkins, I met with the fire chief. And I looked at trying to keep the police department within its framework, within its walls, without going outside the footprint. I actually think we've come up with a solution that would take out the big rocks of the lean process, if you will. And that's actually the technical term of the problems associated with leans, big rocks. After meeting with John Hawkins, I think we could do it to current code. I know we can, I'm confident we can. It consists of knocking down a non-load-bearing condition, some electrical work, flooring, adding some cameras, and just kind of rearranging the inside of the front of the police department, kind of going in that hallway area, if you will. And I think with current staffing, that we could do that. And we could do that for low, mid-five digits on the highest, whatever that means. What does that mean? The chief said 20 grand, but it came in at 30. Oh, no. Just, you know, low to mid-five digits, we could probably make that happen. I'm comfortable with wanting that to happen. But that would then put me back in front of you in three years. We're out of space, we've added staff, we're out of this, we need that. That's what it does. Spacing analysis and things like that back in March, I told you, there is no silver lining. It's whatever square footage we want it to be, based on flow and all the lean process that we, you know, have to address. Agenda separation, I have a list. Again, I didn't want to go down that road. You've already gone down that track. I will in more detail if you need me to. But tonight I just wanted to present you that I really think I could do a three-year plan and follow numbers. I just need direction from you. So tonight is, where would you like me to focus from here?
Well, present the other two options as well.
Long or short? Going off campus, I look back at the minutes, you know, and it's been clear that a year ago, eight months ago, you know, there was this interest of looking off campus at new building, new location, maybe the town-owned lot that used to be the Legion lot, owned by TurboCam off Route 9. Then it seems like we've shifted and I've listened and learned that maybe we should be looking at a shorter solution. It is clear in town that there is a priority for town hall. And no, as a resident, I support that. And I'll say town hall first as a resident. But give the police department what it needs to function and eliminate risk and regulatory stuff that we went into so much detail in December that we had to edit the video. So off-campus separate building, I think, is kind of off the table. It's always on the table. But know that I'd be willing to continue short term, because long-term, regardless of how we slice the pie, square footage analysis and all that, we're looking at around a million bucks. I presented you that soft quote from Grown Builders, it was 953,000. That design works for flow. It adds 1,900 square feet to the police department. It does police department, fire department sharing. And Chief Indy says, go long-term, just go out 20 years, because we know you're only going to add a couple officers to the Bartel formula without four. You gave me one, thank you so much. But to get to where we need to be today, we need an additional three. What are we going to need in five? What are we going to need in 10, 20? A long-term solution would prep for that because we double bunk officers and everything we laid out in December. I'm asking not to send me back, hey, chief, look for something anywhere in between, you know, because I've heard all the great ideas as I've listened and learned and met with different people, that, ah, maybe build a Sally Ford off the back and repurpose the existing Sally Ford. I already did that in December, you have it. And if you don't, I still have the design, I'd be happy to resubmit. It takes into consideration. We can nip it and tuck it a little bit, try to get it under a million, but again, it was 950, so that's why I talk about around a million for long-term. And just know that long-term, we'd be good for about 20 years, and it would also give the fire department an additional approximately 1,000 square feet. If we're going long, then we need to set up a different plan and approach. But in the last few weeks, I looked more and focused more short to try to come in here and give you more options and solutions. Short-term low money, we're out of your hair for three years, which in government time means five, right? And then hopefully, if there's a will and interest to look at a permanent solution at the town hall, which there clearly was just a few months ago, know that we'd be all set. I won't speak for the fire chief, but I'm comfortable that he'll be all set in that timeframe as well. You wouldn't have me coming back in front of you. Just knowing three to five, I foresee me and the next chief coming in front. me or the next chief coming in front of you with the understanding my contract's up December 20th of 2020, and then it's up to you folks whether you renew it or not to set me up to pasture. It also gives me the option to walk out to the pasture as well. So, that's really why I'm here tonight, is just kind of give you update. I've never come in and said, hey, I've looked at a short-term solution, but I have, and that's right then, and that's what we've done back at PD is look at short-term alternatives.
If I can clarify, I think there are three options here on the table that the board has to give direction to bar on. A temporary renovation gets you two to three years, maybe as many as five, that's under $50,000 in all probability, that works within the existing footprint. The second option is the expansion of the existing public safety building that adds space for both police and fire, resolves the issue. It's going to be a million dollars, give or take, and it should last for 15 to 20 years. Or the third option is if you're going to spend that million dollars, you may want to build a brand-new building that focuses on police and then the fire would have all of the current police space for future fire space. So, I think you've got those three options. In the past, you wanted him to look at options one and two. The question before you today is, do you want him to go and start spending money to design and come up with option one? Or do you want him to start spending a design for option two, which would then come to town meeting? Option one would not need to go to town meeting. Option two needs to go to town meeting. Option three needs to go to town meeting.
As John so eloquently put it, do we have any comments?
First of all, I think we should revisit TD Bank North for a town hall, and I think that law is...
Dan, I appreciate that.
I know, but...
Let's give the chief...
I have direction though. So, I'm for a temporary solution and I agree with all the study on the septic because we have three dilemmas: town hall, police, and library. And I'd rather see the library stay up here and then I think we could do a short-term addition, like you're talking.
Interior.
Interior, work. Get you by. And then if you're taking the blueprint to TD Bank North, that's a good law. It can, I think we can support both of you guys.
So...
I'm not expert, but we could look into it.
So, which one of those three options would you like to select?
Number one. And then off-site.
Tracy, do you have some, please?
Chief, at one point, there was a discussion about the safety of the officers based on the configuration of your police station. If you go about the temporary renovation, reconfiguration for the three-to-five-year plan that you're discussing, have we addressed the safety of the officers with it?
Yes, through new cameras, through, you know, footsteps, if you will, so yes.
Okay, have we addressed the issue with the juvenile?
Yes.
Okay, so, in this three-to-five-year plan for under $100,000, we will have addressed for short-term, but not addressed growth?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any comments that I can move?
I've got, my comment is that I think if you go too short, you're just going to create another problem in three years, it's going to be right there on you.
Can I interest that comment?
Please.
Okay. So, that's why I'm not for, let's do a, that's why I'm not for, let's do a smaller addition for cheaper money because that's when we're going to find ourselves in a position. Back in 2019, we went down this road of a hundred, couple hundred grand, whatever you think I should spend, and then I got to try to make it work around a framework of a dollar. And we'll build a smaller addition, which in three to five years, seven, eight, whatever the number is, then me or the next chief will be in front of you saying, well, we can't do this and we can't do that. You eliminate options because back in 2018, 19, you did this small addition out here that now ruins the flow of this, that, and the other thing. Remember, the lot is challenging, there's a pond, there's wetlands, the lot's challenging.
I was on the board when that went through.
So, it's already challenging enough, and if we start adding piecemealing, you know, kind of like the house that grows, you know, you see these add-ons and different things, I don't want to go down that road. If we're going short, I'll be good, we'll be good for about three years or so based on existing staffing. And we can stay within the footprint. That's the buzzword that I had in my notes is the footprint. As soon as we start digging, we eliminate options. So, if we're going to dig, we really need to go, go big or go home. That's it, you know? And big for us is going to be a million bucks. And with that, again, it's police and fire, we'll be good for decades. Private industry doesn't like to talk like that. They want to keep it three years or so. So, I'm willing to adopt that.
Did you say a sentence?
No.
Do you have, do you have a preference?
I just don't, I think you can go too short and it winds up right near nowhere.
Yes. So, do you have...
So, I mean, it's just, that's just my own opinion.
So, what option would you select if you were to ask the vote?
I'd want to look at all three of them.
All right.
Very close.
Tracy, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you that question, but which one would you be leaning to if, this is not a vote, this is just information?
Based on the information that's been provided right now, I would probably go with the very first option. But I want to recognize that in March, the federal lending rate went up, which means that bonds cost more. It's expected to go up three more times in the next nine months, which means any money that will be borrowed over the next few years is going to be borrowed at much higher rates. So, if we're going to address these issues and bring this before the voters in this town, I almost feel like we should tear off the Band-Aid and go for option number two. And I'm fluctuating with both of those issues.
Very well. Andy?
So, get close because I'm never close enough to like... I think for, if you're looking at three years, we can solve the problems that are critical to today, which have been an ongoing issue that we started addressing last year, that gets us through today. But I think that means we have to actively work and push the bigger plan for the future. And if it's building a new building, then that's what we have to look at doing. But we've got to have a plan for it and we've got to have a site for it and it's got to be, that's what the next three years is going to be spent working on after we address the problems we have today. But my take is you deal with it through option one today and then you, we get a plan going to solve the problem in the next couple of years. It's a bigger, it's a bigger solution.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? I look, excuse me, I'll give you a second chance. I feel that option one is the way to go. We need to, Band-Aid in this is just the same thing that's been happening in the town hall for years and years and years, it keeps getting moved over, moved over, and moved over. If we can take care of this, we're also going to take care of two departments at the same time because it allows the fire department to have more space at the same time. We take care of the issues that could eventually hurt us in the near future. So, that's how I feel. So, can you, then Dan, you had a comment?
Yeah, well, I hear your comment right there. You said it'd give more space for both, but number one, because it's a temporary, for the city of him, not the fire department.
That's correct.
So, I am, like he said it better than me, but I am for, number one, just temporary solution, but we, you start working right on, on a separate building right away and get it out there and get all your needs for decades. And I believe TD Bank North is for both of those. That's my opinion.
Okay, do we have any other comments, please? Tracy?
It sounds to me like the select board wants to address the issue by using option number one and by March, have in place option two or three. Am I correct in saying that? Okay. How long would these temporary renovations and reconfiguration take?
I think that's a John Huckins question. It's a contracting question. Again, finding a contractor now to do it is the tough part. Everybody's busy. Can you hear me now?
So, I can see the townspeople and certainly could understand this, being extremely frustrated that we begin this process, spending under $100,000, reconfiguring this, at the same time that we'd then be placing on the ballot a warrant article to build. John?
I would doubt very much that we would have a warrant article for March of 2019 because I would think that the planning that's being envisioned for both departments is going to take us past that. I don't see us doing it in 19. I think '20 is the earliest it would go on the warrant, the earliest it would be built and occupied is '21. So, that, the money that we spend here on renovation is not going to be totally lost. I mean, the building is being improved and upgraded. So, I think if you want us to pursue option one, then there are two more questions. But it seems to me that I'm hearing option one and try to keep it as relatively inexpensive, but make sure we address the major issues that we had for safety, for liability, for the gun locker, for the gender separation, for the juvenile separation, those issues. So, if that's the case, then it comes down to, we need to design the work that's going to be done and get approval on that design that the building inspector can approve, which would require an engineering or an architect signing off on it. So, there are two ways to go about doing that, essentially, there's actually three, but the third way isn't that effective today. One is design-build and the other is an architect that comes in, designs it, and then you put it out to bid. Either option has its pluses and minuses. The design-build, I think, would be a little quicker, but the selecting, the contractor is going to be the issue. But if that's what you want, we can put out an RFP for design-build on the work with a rough sketch of what we want and then they would be responsible for the engineering, the design, and the construction. So, which way do you want to go? Architect or design-build?
Dan?
I'd for the design-build. I think you have a rough idea what you want, right?
Yes, so it's not going to be an architect coming in telling me what he's going to do through design.
You're going to draw a sketch. You're going to hand over to contractor?
Yes.
He's going to engineer and he's going to go back to you for your approval?
That's what I'm doing.
Tracy?
Would you agree with that course of action?
Basically, I agree with that course of action, but there's no engineering required. This is non-structural, interior walls and the...
Are you sure they're all non-structural?
Yeah, the whole thing faced man, we looked at the same...
You're going to have an FPE look at that. An FPE has to approve that.
I think what you're talking about, Rick, is a, is that you would need to have an...
I'm not going to buy a wheelbarrow if what I need is an excavator.
Well, I think what Rick is saying is you need...
Give the opportunity.
What, to buy the wheelbarrow?
No, turn around, tell me that again.
I said, I wouldn't buy a wheelbarrow if what I needed was an excavator.
But did you hear Rick? Rick was saying we need to have a fire protection engineer sign off on it. Is that correct, Rick?
That is absolutely correct because if it doesn't meet the fire code and you've spent that money, then you're going to be changing it. So, you need somebody to tell you first that it's legal.
So, that's where, if it's design-build, then that person has to sign off on it? If it's, if you want to start with the fire protection engineer and hire them to do it, it doesn't matter to me which direction we go, we've got to get there before we're done. If you want us to put an RFP together for design-build, we can do that. When it comes to hiring, I need Rick, when it comes to hiring a fire protection engineer, there are options out there, correct?
Absolutely.
There's a couple or three different companies you could choose from. So, which do you want us to go after first? The builder who would have to get the professional firefighting engineer or the, go for the engineer first?
Toss-up, I would probably do the design-build because what they're going to do is they're going to go to the FPE and say, this is what the configuration change is and how it looks, and they can either yea it or nay it.
Tracy?
I think I agree with Andy on that and the FPE could actually be part of the RFP where they're contracted through the design company and paid through the design company for ease of RFPs at this point. There's absolutely no reason that if they're designing it and building it, that they also can't find the expert.
Dan?
I agree because, say I, as a contractor, I would talk to Mr. Williams. He gives me a rough design. I go to professionals with the stamps and everything and I can give them everything he wants. Then he turns into the building inspector. It can happen.
Very well, then, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We'll second it.
Second it. Dan, decide the vote, please.
Yeah, right.
All right, Tom, fine.
Reluctantly, I will say aye. If this is what the chief thinks that will work and he's content with it, I still think you're maybe under buildings and come back next year, we're needing two more police and you haven't got any place to put them except for a bunk bed. Excuse me?
I was done, I was addressing Mr. Air who wanted to make a comment.
Dan, Dan by?
Really, I, motion carries?
Um, do I need to clarify, this is a two-part thing. This is, when I start this, you need to start looking at a, make a picture.
We're going out of time, Bill, what the motion is for.
I know, but then, but still...
Well, I think we...
Within the next three years, you need to do a design for a police station.
Yes.
That was my intention. So, I have to raise my vote, um, motion?
No, I think that, I think we all understand that that's the, the goal of the board of selectmen is to come up with a plan for the needs of the town buildings and this fits in with that goal that the board of selectmen have. And what is clear, this is the temporary and then we've got to work on the long-term. Can I, I've got another comment, though. I just want to make clear that there is a renovation fund. It had $72,000 in it, we're spending, how much, $45,000 roughly on the...
Forty-two, $100, I think we would have left.
Well, then there's some other little stuff for those. So, that will still have between, over $25,000 in it that could be used for this renovation project that's in a trust fund. So, you just be aware that that's why it doesn't have to go to town meeting. Also, the town meeting did not defeat a police station project so you can spend money because no does not mean no this year. You can't spend anything on the town hall.
Right.
But you can spend on this. So, just those two comments, we'll need that in the vote when you're ready to vote the money, but at this point, I just want you to know the money is there and we're going to put the RFP together, it'll come back to the board for approval, hopefully in the next meeting, and then we'll get it out.
Well, I do think we still need to work to try and stay within our budget because that is what our SPC budget is, is the budget itself, not the...
Absolutely. But we do have a reserve that we can use.
Well, we're going to open up bids for the technology service and what we're going, what I'd like to do with, without any objections, is I'm going to open them up and state who the bidder is and then put it, put it all together and then have the technology group go through it because of all the different areas that each one has to cover. We're going to have them look at it and then come back with us the recommendations on the bids and what we have. Questions?
No, I absolutely agree with that course of action.
Thank you very much. It makes it easier because I, for one, can't dig on page three to go to seven, so that's it. So, are you, are you all ready to take this on?
The technology committee will do their part.
When we do make recommendations, Andy?
Yep.
First one I have here is Back Bay Networks. Let's see, let me address where they're at.
Back Bay Networks?
Back Bay Networks from Dover, New Hampshire. That's the first one. Second one is from Technology Services. No, I'm sorry, this is from Two Way Communications Services, Inc., in New England, New Hampshire. Almost Christmas is this easy, but it's not. This one here is from Rockport Technology Group, Inc., and they're from Salem, New This one here is from Twin State Technologies, and, it's from Twin State Technologies here. And the other one is from Seacoast Computer, Inc., and they're from Rochester, New Hampshire.
This one's Ponkad.
Ponkad, okay. Another one from Lenhart Systems.
What's the name of it?
Lenhart, L-E-N-H-A-R-T-H.
Right, yes, sir.
And they are from, very-
He is on the committee group with monkey participation, right?
The next one is from Ramon, R-O, excuse me, R-M-O-N Networks. Can I say it, Rick? I'm sure, hope so.
No, it's abbreviation. It's an acronym. They're out of Placso.
And they're out of Placso. Thank you very much. Any more?
That's it.
That winds up. If anybody has any questions, would like to look at them, please give the town hall a call. You can review it tomorrow. It's a town hall.
There were seven responses in all.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I have a question. Yes, Dan?
Chairperson Bailey, I just wanted to ask Andy, when he brings it to the technology committee, can you just be mindful of reviewing the portions where there are any additional charges for onsite?
Yep.
Oftentimes, I have found through experience that the charges to actually travel to the site end up being astronomical. And if that's the case, we take into account the distance.
Yeah, we, when we go through, we'll put together a list of criteria, and then we'll assess all of them on that same criteria.
Yeah, what I, based upon the questions that they've asked, I suspect you're going to have some that are bidding per computer. So much a computer, others are going to be bidding per hour, others may be bidding based upon monitoring, some software changes. I mean, that's why it's very, it's going to be a job comparing, you've got an apple, a grapefruit, an orange, and, you know, a cherry in there, and you've got to decide which price and which service is going to be best for the town. And I suspect they'll range, one will maybe five times what the high bid, maybe five times what the low bid is. I mean, you're going to have a long range.
Have you assigned the technology personnel that you currently have to work with the committee at all and answer those questions, John?
We don't have any technology people.
Our technology personnel.
Okay. So, John, you'll make yourself available.
I am on the committee. It was not my choice, but I'm there.
It kind of happened.
Yeah, we do not have any, any technology people, really, other than, Will has been helping the fire department with technology for a number of years, but as a call firefighter.
He's on the committee as a network administrator.
He's that Lenhart system that bid.
Who's updating the actual website?
That's being done by Peyton and Abby in house.
And they shouldn't be a part of the technology committee to discuss what they've encountered?
Well, the website isn't really part of the, part of this bid, but may, maybe we'll have, we have had Abby to meetings, but not on a regular basis.
Okay.
I'm looking to move on to getting the board's approval. As everybody's aware of, we had a, John sent us out a email concerning the ambulance, and I would like to move forward and ask the fire chief if he could give us a presentation on the difficulty we had with the ambulance. Is there anybody here that disapproves of doing that? Saying now we'll walk up. Chief, would you like to come and address this, please?
I heard that the fire, the fire truck now needs to follow it around and put it out.
Yeah, that's right. So I don't have any answers for you. As, I'm not sure what was in the email, but somewhere around 11 o'clock this morning, we were making the transport, and the crew started to smell smoke and saw a smoke cloud in the patient compartment. So they immediately pulled over and called for McGregor and Durham Fire, and made sure the patient was safe, evacuated the patient into McGregor ambulance, Durham Fire came out and assisted in disconnecting batteries and stuff. We don't know at this point what it was. I'm guardedly optimistic that it was some type of electronic device that feeds power somewhere between the ambulance box and the vehicle itself, that hopefully just decided it was time to smoke up, and it's a case to unplug and to move in and move on. But my main reason for having a discussion with you folks tonight is, I obviously don't want to have to wait two weeks to say, hey, this is the issue, and do we move forward? So I'm just requesting permission to use my best judgment in determining repair status of that vehicle. And should the situation dictate that I need another opinion, I'd like to speak to the administrator, and I would like you folks to approve him and I making the decision on what we believe in the best interest of the town. Again, I'm guardedly optimistic that it would be a relatively easy fix. But if they get in there and determine that there's some wires burnt, and we're starting to talk about wiring harnesses and stuff, now the insurance company gets in the middle of it, and that can be very lengthy and expensive and stuff like that. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I still believe the ambulance was running fine, other than the fact that I told them just to hand the patient a fire extinguisher and say, hold on to this. But no, the ambulance was running. It didn't, it didn't-
The car was still rolling.
It didn't stop. So unfortunately, or unfortunately, we stopped and pulled over, but we were not able to identify a specific area this mechanic had. So it's kind of where we're at right now. We have very graciously been loaned an ambulance for the short term again. So it's kind of where I'm at right now.
Any other questions, though?
Six weeks on the new ambulance, is that right?
It would be six months once you approve the bid.
Yes.
Again, I'm three-quarters away from the RFP to get it, so that I can get it to you guys. My, my goal is to get it done, get it approved, get it out, get it two or three week turnaround, and then determine where we're at. One company has expressed to me that they would have a demo unit available in early July that is similar to what we're going to be putting a bid spec out for. And I know that you folks are interested in at least having an idea of what a new ambulance is going to cost versus what is pretty close to what we're looking for. Demo would be to be able to try to compare apple to apple, determine whether the demo is, is a good deal or if we're better off to go with a new one.
Do you have any estimate of what the repairs might cost us?
Not, because I don't think it would cost that yet. Again, it, it had the odor of like a white ballast type of thing, so.
The odor of what?
Ozons.
A white ballast?
White ballast, there's no, there's no white ballast in there.
It's like too old.
Like a, like a computer, a computer deciding, you gave it too much power.
Dan?
As a farmer and a mechanic, them boxes, it could be, trying to figure it out, it could take a lot of time, changing all three of them to try and get at it. And although, I think we should go ahead and get moving on this. Because that's, that ambulance is a six liter. That engine, we've got to run it, go now, without any last hurrah.
Tracy?
In your budget is the purchase of a new ambulance, correct?
That's correct.
Technically, it's in our revolving fund.
Okay. And there is a demo model that you could take ownership of in July of this year?
That's correct.
But it's going to take six months if we build a new one?
Well, yeah.
It's a long time.
But I think the board, and I'm not sure if we discussed this after you got elected or before you got elected, but I think what the board was looking for was, is that if, and I'm going to use round numbers, but if that demo was available to the town for $195,000, and it's got 15,000 miles on it, and it's two years old, or a year old, and we can buy a brand spanking new one for $204,000 and exactly what we want, I think that the board's sitting there going, I'm not sure that that's a really good deal for only saving $5,000 or $6,000. And I think that's what the board was looking at.
And I certainly understand that cost, but there's also a cost to human life. And do we have another ambulance available to take care of our townspeople?
That, I-
Fortunately, Milton has been very generous in loading an ambulance frequently.
Yes, we're, we're-
And McGregor.
McGregor has been good to us.
And are we paying for this through some type of mutual aid agreement, or just out of kindness they're providing this?
I've had, I've had conversations with the fire chief up there. I've had conversations with McGregor. To this point, they have not charged us anything.
That's very kind. And, okay. So we either wait six months, we get this ambulance fixed in whatever amount of time it takes, or we purchase the demo model.
Correct.
And your recommendation is what?
My recommendation is that you give us a few days to see, again, if we're, we're approximately six weeks out before the demo would be available. That's a long time to go without an ambulance. I would look at other options, including the company that would be interested in selling the demo. Sometimes they get a trade-in that you could at least use temporarily.
A loaner?
Yeah. Well, they don't call them a loaner because of insurance purposes, but they sell it to you for a dollar and say, when you're, when you're done, we'll buy it back. I'll give you a dollar. So certainly that would be an option. I guess what I'm looking at right now is, I'm guardedly optimistic that, I don't think the issue with the ambulance that happened today had anything to do with the repairs that were done recently. I don't think they have anything to do with the engine. The engine's been running fine since we made the last repair. I, I just think that there's some type of an electronic component in there that decided it's, it's given up the ghost, and hopefully it's just unplugging, plugging, going back, and be done with it. So I guess what I'm asking for tonight is the authority to work within what I believe is, is what you charge me with, is making sure we have an ambulance that's running. So using my best judgment, in the next day or two or three, when they come back and say, here's the issue, and this is what it's going to take to fix it, I will use my best judgment to say, that makes sense to do this, or this is a little deeper than I think it should be, and I should have a conversation with the town administrator.
Now, I don't want to sound like I'm pushing it. I'm going to go everybody else, and I will do a repeat on people. But what I'm saying to you is that we've had this recommendation. We're going to decide, do we want to put a limit on how much we want to go before we're brought back on, or do we want to say, go ahead and do it within, within a certain price point? I think we, I would, I would prefer that we would consider a price point for John and Rick to turn around and decide the repairs on it. Now, do we have any other comments from, Mr. Don, do you have any?
I don't think you're going to do much until you have some idea of what the expense could be.
I think the-
Do you have anything?
No, I agree with what Don said.
I think the issue's twofold. One is that the ambulance is something that gets used every day. So it's, I really, probably unless it's outrageously expensive, I'm probably going to, we're, we're probably going to need to fix a thing and get it back as soon as we can. That's probably the most reasonable option. Again, it's not worth anything for a trade-in. You know, you can stand there, and let's be honest, you can stand there and say, we want X number of dollars for a trade-in. They'll give you X number of dollars for a trade-in, and they'll figure that into the bid price. The company that we bought that from, he was, he's a New England Yankee who's very frank. It's, it's not worth anything as a trade. Keep the thing. So, and I agree with that, that we should keep it and run it as a second piece.
I want to get back, please, I want to get back to, are we going to give them the authority to make the repairs, and if it gets astronomical, then we'll be brought back in? So do you want to give them an open piece to get it fixed and get it taken care of, or do we want to turn around and set a limit on it? Dan?
Well, first of all, as I was trying to get to, he, they don't know what you're going to get. If you had to tear the whole box apart and rewire it, or it would be smoking.
That's what we're trying to determine.
He can make that decision, no problem. He's not going to spend $100,000 rebuilding it.
That's why I asked, what do we want to set for a limit, if we want to set a limit? Please, take the shot, yes.
I think $10,000 is like the maximum that should be spent on the repair of this.
Other comments? Do I have a motion? This, the motion should include the fact that we're going to allow the-
For the demo, too. You investigated the demo, huh, Jim?
No, we're not, we're not, we're talking about the repairs of this particular ambulance. We're not involved in anything else. We're going to say, maximum of $10,000 that John and Rick can turn around and make the decision to have it done.
Oh, what's left in your-
No, wait a minute. Please, please. And so I'm saying to everybody here is, you said $10,000. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. The chief and John can make the decision on what to do with the repairs of this up to the cost of $10,000.
Do I have a second?
I got a question.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? Discussion? Dan?
So what's allowed, left in your maintenance line?
That's law and court. The, the maintenance, the maintenance line is overspent, so as I've done always, we'll work within the budget. We'll just, we'll forego other things to make sure that we-
I have a question.
Go ahead. Andy?
What, what would a lease cost? Could we get a loaner?
The problem with, the administration can correct me on that, but the problem with a lease is that you can't have a no, no payment clause. So leases aren't good because if the board has decided next year, we pay a lease payment, and the board has decided next year not to make that payment, they'd have to turn it in. So I think-
A short term, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, well, you might, you might be able to rent something. And again, there, McGregor is in the process of doing a refurb on one of their ambulances. So while that's all being refurbished, the company said, hey, I've got this ambulance. I'll sell you for $100.
Just my, my thought process is if we're spending as much to repair as it would cost us to get a loaner-
Right.
-in the short term that's reliable?
And I guess that's kind of where I was all heading into, is that if it made more sense to say, look, cut your losses, trade the thing in, even if you don't get a lot of money out of it, trade it in, find something to bridge a gap, and then come back and decide whether you're going to go new, or you're going to, or you're going to buy that demo. That's kind of where I was headed in. In the grand scheme of the whole picture, to give the administrative scrutiny and I enough latitude to say, it doesn't make sense to do this, but it does make sense to do this. And it really came back to, is if, if I get an answer tomorrow, not want to have to wait two weeks, or needing to wait two weeks to get an answer from you. If, if you folks were comfortable with, if, if there was something beyond that and you're comfortable with, we could send an email load and get approval that way with a formal vote after. I don't know.
Can you do that?
Can you do that?
Could I ask one question, not being a mechanic? What if in the process, you find that it would be cheaper to buy a rebuilt, whatever it is that you probably-
We'll, we'll look at those kinds of options.
Rather than try to repair that one?
Yep. That, that's kind of what I was asking, to kind of make this kind of a blanket. Hey, chief, you can spend up to $10,000 either repairing this or renting something to get you by till we get you.
Okay, we have a motion?
If John wants to speak. John, over there?
Okay, John.
Rick, as far as where this fund comes from to repair the ambulance, I believe you can take this out of the revolving fund and not have to take it out of your operating budget, because that is there for ambulance expenses, and I believe that that's proper. I'll check the wording tomorrow. But, you know, you've, you've absorbed a lot of ambulance costs out of there. In addition, I'd just like to say, obviously, we're going to try to do what's best for- what's best for the town. I don't think we'll spend anywhere near 10 before we decide we're going to look at some other option, buying a used ambulance somewhere that has better life in it than our current used ambulance or something. But, I mean, Rick just did not want to be making the decision or waiting three weeks where we just don't know what's going on, so.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Is there any discussion? Is there any more discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Dan, on the motion?
On the motion, you keep us in the loop on emails, John.
Right.
We can't inform, I know we can't respond, but you keep us informed.
No, I...
You keep you informed.
Yeah, I have no issue with making sure that you guys know where we're at in this. I'm, I would prefer to take money out of the revolving fund knowing if we needed to because again, I think that the issue with the revolving fund is, you're probably looking at $200,000 ambulance today's dollars. We need to make sure that we've got enough money in X number of years down the road because that's the funding mechanism to replace the ambulance. So, if in X number of years, that's 250,000, 260,000, or 270,000 dollars, we need to make sure that we have the money and they're to cover in X three years in this time to replace it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Dan?
Fireworks, they're, the ambulance, they're in fire trucks.
We're talking about this...
I know, they're already on money. I've talked to Vickers. I've talked to Vickers. These numbers he's giving us are real numbers. It's crazy.
We are on this motion, please, Dan.
I don't know what this order is.
It has nothing to do with the motion for $10,000. Is there any other further discussion on giving John and Rick a maximum of $10,000 to the repairs to the ambulance? Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Andy, will you start it off this time, please?
I with a cotton candy and a corn dog.
Protocol five.
Maybe.
All right, and I will say, yes, we have four to one?
I do.
Well, that is five to five. Thank you. Close discussion on that. Before we go, we have other comments. Anybody have public comments?
All right, I'll be quick. I'll be really quick. Two hours, an hour and a half into it.
Good evening.
So much for your library.
Oh, man, we're going actual on the next time, you're showing up. So, Sam, Boto 34 St. Louis. Good evening, y'all. First off, thank you for signing off on the paperwork for PSNH and our flags. As you probably no doubt have noticed, the flags are all up, down, and special shout out to my two brothers and sister who organized and executed the flags going up there. So, like us on Facebook, Start a Strategy for Parents. Shameless plug, sorry. The second thing is a free program, as you guys are people who are making decisions in our town that affect the livelihood of our town, attracting young people. The UNH Law School is hosting a seven-hour called Young People in New Hampshire, Why They're Staying and Why They're Going. That's happening next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday, June 13th from 8:00 to 9:30 in the UNH Law School in Concord. I can forward the information on to John, who can forward it on to you all. I'll be driving out. My boss gave me the hour and a half, about two hours altogether to go out there. So, if anybody wants to cartpool, you're welcome to join for that too. That's all again. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam.
I don't have the tally on that.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Is there any other public comment, please?
Just get your names. James Ryan, 24 Hall Road. I just wanted to let you all know that the boilers are completed at the Public Safety Building. They're inspected by the town, just waiting to be inspected by the Labor Board. So, everything went well. It was a little more processed than what intended, but they came out beautiful and water heater, everything's up and running good. So, that's the first.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the board for awarding the bid to myself so I could do that and save the town some money. So, thank you for that.
All I can say to you is just continue to be a little better. Really help the town out. Tremendous stuff. Thank you.
It happens. Second thing is, we had this big long discussion about the ambulance, about the $10,000 approval in this and that. We have insurance people. This is insurance. We have $1,000 deductible. So, if insurance doesn't fix it, then obviously nothing drunk. But if it's over $1,000, it should go through the insurance anyway so that we don't have to spend our own money on it. That's why we pay for insurance.
We're aware of that and we are trying to gather the information to file the claim, but it depends upon what the cause of the fire was.
Well, even as malfunction, insurance should still cover.
At over $1,000.
Right. So, we just had a big long 20-minute discussion on $10,000 approval to let Rick and John make that decision when...
Right, but we have to spend it and we go.
You have any share?
Just to clarify, we're also talking about leasing, should we need to, up to $10,000?
And I, oh, the leasing was in the $10,000?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So, that was it. And then there was the third thing. Yep, there's another public comment. Thank you.
Is there any other further public comment? Seeing none, we move on. Next, review of the minutes of May 21st, 2018. Comments from the board?
Yes, I did have a quick note. Two, actually. One of them was, I'm sorry, what's that?
Hope it's a good note.
Uh, one of them was just a small clerical, and the other one, I'm just waiting on my computer to restart. It's been idle for so long here. All right.
Somebody might have actually...
All right. Uh, the first one, we're, under Old Business, it just said, "Select Person Era," or Select Person Hardicraft noted that we were lucky to get five responses and she would normally support the department head, support the department head. So, it's just an S on that. There was an S on the end of it. And then the last, the other one was under, on page three, it said, "The Economic Development Chapter of the Master Plan had been approved. The Planning Board had been considering the creation of an Economic Development Committee. It would be a subcommittee of the Planning Board." What we had talked about was we had to get approval from the Select Board to have an Economic Development Subcommittee, but we did agree that the Subcommittee would fall under the Planning Board. So, just clearing up the language on that.
Actually, it's my understanding at the meeting that we asked John to go out and give us recommendations of other towns that had economic development committees and that we'd make a decision based on that information.
And I may be completely off on that because I thought we had talked about it.
Perhaps we should review the tape again?
Yeah.
Is that ringing a bell with anyone else? John?
I will, I will check, but my recollection is the same as yours.
I may be off, but I know what was here is not what we had talked about.
Yeah, let's delay the minutes.
We'll continue the minutes in the next meeting.
Thank you.
We're going on staff reports, John?
Yeah, the first thing is, I have not received a formal appeal of the waiver that I was giving on the noise ordinance. Is there anyone who is appealing my granting of the fireworks permit for July for Chrissy Circle? Hearing none, then I assume that therefore that permit is valid and they may proceed with the fireworks.
Any comments in the board?
I just want to be sure. In the letter that was drafted to you, John, it said 10:30. Can you make sure the person discharging the fireworks stops at 10?
10, yes.
It'll be done by 10.
10.
The new letter that's addressed on May 30th, it says, "July 7th from 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m."
Yes. That was different than what was asked. Sean asked for 10:30 and I thought 10 would be enough.
Yep.
Last two years, I've walked down Chrissy Circle, what's going on, and identified myself, and it's very professionally run, organized itself, and no safety hazards I've seen. So...
I don't need any action and as long as nobody's appealed it, so.
Appreciate it.
Great time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next...
All minutes come on down again.
I have distributed the request for proposal for line striping. Is there any changes before we send that out?
Does anybody in the board have changes? Seeing none. Dan?
It seems like it's going up kind of late. Every town around town has already been done, and I thought we were trying to get them done earlier. It's been a longer light battle. I thought Andy brought that up. We did it earlier last year or year before.
I think where the problem comes is where we're paving roads and especially where we're not sure, all the roads that we're paving, there was a delay to wait until we had finished paving. I understand that there are advantages to paving early spring in that then you'll have the benefit of the line all summer because winter is what really wears them off, the sand isn't abrasive.
There's more roads that we straight that are unpaved than paved.
Correct.
And that's what I'm saying. I thought we were going to earlier start on it. Because right now, a lot of people can't drive in the rain. Right now, it'd be more beneficiary for them right now than in the fall and they're going to cover with sand.
Well, do you want to approve the RFP to go out today?
Ladies and gentlemen, the RFP is before us, please. Do we want to approve it or not approve it? And if so, we have a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the RFP. John, you made note that the bids would come directly to you, correct?
Yes, they're coming to the...
Okay, I'd make a motion.
Selectmen's office.
I'll second that. Dan?
Air Ride.
Protocol five?
Hatchway.
Yeah, bye.
Hillary, I, motion carries. Thank you very much, board members.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was in the RFP, but we'll double check. They're all supposed to come into the Selectmen's Office. Is that your understanding, Pete?
Yeah. We're not going to, we're going to, I think what Dan was alluding to is that we get to striping quicker this year because last year we did it in like November, and if you look at the roads, there's nothing left on them.
Yeah, the winter has had on them. Ever since the air quality issues caused them to stop using the paint, they really lasted well. They just don't last as well as they used to. The next issue was raised about the highway truck logo that is on the black pickup. It is a logo that was designed in-house that is currently being used on uniforms and some other places. And there was concern that it should be the town seal that's on the truck instead of the departmental logo. So, I bring in that forward. What does the board wish to do?
Discussion. Dan? Dan, you going to have any comments?
She, hang on, maybe do it. Let her go first.
Select person, huh?
I'm not sure who designed the logo, but I actually like it. And I appreciate the enthusiasm of any group that really wants to celebrate the work that they're doing. The only thing I would say is that on the town vehicles, if it has been our history to use the actual town seal, I think we should continue with that. The other thing is in reference to being proud of what they do and certainly celebrating the hard work, perhaps what we could do is the back of the T-shirts that are created has the logo on it with the seal for the town on the front, was my thoughts on that.
Dan, you was next.
I agree with her.
All right. Andy?
I was just going to say, I agree with Tracy. I think the logo that's on the truck should be the town logo or the town seal on the trucks. The shirts, I don't have a big issue about the shirts one way or the other. And I do recognize and appreciate the enthusiasm for coming up with their own logo as well.
It's an excellent logo. Is anybody else in the board have comments? Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, in the answer to your question, all three pickup trucks had nothing simply Town of Barrington on the door and Barrington Highway on the back. The logo was designed when we decided to get shirts. We got the green shirts and the orange shirts, and we thought it would look professional. That's why the logo. Logo encompasses kind of what everything we do do, from shoveling dirt to running excavators to plowing snow to being mechanics. And that's why we put it on the pickup. We thought, hey, this, I've gotten nothing but good reviews until now.
I do think that people like to be able to recognize when they encounter professionals from the Town of Barrington, that they work for the Town of Barrington. I really think that we need to encourage the highway department to be enthusiastic about the great work they do. So, I'm not sure what the huge cost difference would be to put their logo, a large logo on the back of their shirts with the town seal on the front, if that's what we were doing. But that would be my recommendation.
Well, you mean going forward. I don't want to order new uniforms. But have both the logo and the seal on uniforms, but have the seal on the truck.
I think, I think... Does anyone object to the seal on the truck?
The current seal?
Yes.
I don't, to be honest, I don't really like the current seal. Like, I think it should be the town seal. We've been, if you look at many of the other vehicles, they have the town seal on them. It's really what's appropriate for our town and it creates consistency in it. I mean, we went through this with the building inspector and his guys, his crew earlier this year, last year, where we made sure they had jackets and uniforms with the seal because they didn't know who they, people didn't know who they were when they were showing up or when they were doing assessments. They made sure the assessing people had something that they did themselves, yeah. So, I mean, I really do think from a consistency and appropriate standpoint, I would prefer to see the seal of the town on the doors of the truck.
For the fire trucks, waivers with our seal?
Most of them. The oldest one does not have the seal, but that was probably before we had a seal.
We've had a seal for a while.
Some of the trucks have BFD on the door and the seal.
We've had, we've had the seal for years and years, but prior to my taking over as chief, the conservative New England Yankees that they were, it had BFD in the number of the truck on it. And as time went on, we moved forward and we started to put the seal on them. And I'm, I'm one truck that doesn't have a seal. I'll just say this, whatever policy you decide to do, if you're going to, if you want the town seal on the vehicle, then they probably ought to be on all the vehicles. And that's not necessarily the case. So, I think I'd be a little careful. If you're going to let, if you're going to let departments decide, some departments decide how the vehicles are going to be lettered, then you should let all the departments decide how they're going to be lettered.
Please, who has next one?
I just want to make a motion that we redo the seal on the truck to be the town seal and that going forward, we allow the logo on the back of the uniforms.
Second that motion.
Dan, with your staff, please.
Air Ride.
Protocol five.
Yeah, bye.
Hillary, I carries five. Thank you very much.
That's a new policy there.
Sure, it's a policy that we want to do right now. John will get it written up. We'll take care of it from there. Okay, John?
Yes.
Thank you very much. What else do we have?
Graduate fellowship.
John, do you have any other?
That's all I have. I think it's close to the end.
Okay, then we'll go to Suzanne's staff report, please.
I have three deeds that need to be signed. These are the ones from the seal bids. All the payments have come in. We're still waiting for the purchase and sale on the Castle Rock ones, but these are the other three. A timber tax warrant, a abatement's number 12 through 16, which four of them have come from appeals of, through our appraiser, and I've attached to it the reason why she's recommending the abatement. One land use change tax warrant, vendor manifested May 30th, payroll manifested May 27th, and the warrant for unlicensed dogs.
Comment from the board? Seeing that we'll sign those after the meeting, please. Oh, Andy, please?
It's not a comment on that. It's just one item that was on John's report that wasn't addressed. Are we good now with the Office 365 piece? Are you...
No, I, I want to talk to the committee again about it because it, I think there's a couple of reasons that we need to clarify just exactly what we're getting procedures compliant and what we need because I think it was a little unclear when we went to the board the first time. And I'd just like to do that with the committee and then... And I'd just like to do that with the committee and then... The other thing is I want to get the new IT vendor, whoever the IT vendor is on board, and have them be responsible for installing it on all the machines.
Yeah, it was just based on the responses from all of the board members on that. It seems like everybody is comfortable and on board with moving forward, so that's why...
You mean not being CEGIS compliant?
Well, it's, it is as close to CEGIS compliant as you can get in the state of New Hampshire.
No, you could be totally CEGIS compliant with an exchange server. It's as close as you can get with a cloud-based service in New Hampshire.
Right, but you have to hire somebody to manage an exchange server and the, in order to do that, that's a whole nother level. And that could be far above and beyond what almost anybody else in the state of New Hampshire is doing based on the conversations that Will has had with the different towns.
Now, my understanding is the terms that are CEGIS compliant are doing it with an exchange service. But I think the, uh, the thing that came out for information was the town has access to CEGIS compliant information through the county, and that is independent of whatever they have for email. So CEGIS compliant email may not be as critical for the police department as originally thought. I just wanted the board to be clear that we're not getting CEGIS compliance for spending the $18,000 for Office 365.
We're getting far closer to it than we currently are.
We are more secure.
We're more secure, we're closer. We actually are compliant to the, from the cloud, the connection. The issue is from...
Here to the cloud.
Here to the cloud. Here to the cloud is the problem. But we're, we're solving all of the other issues that we currently are facing or have faced.
We're solving some of the other issues that are significant.
I agree. So the technology committee universally agrees to move forward?
I, I, that's what they had when we went to the board the first time, and since then it's come back and the committee hasn't met. We're gonna be meeting soon, so, and I don't want to proceed until we get the new IT person on to start implementing it, so...
So you're the one that's uncomfortable with it because the rest of the committee is all, I can pull up the email and go through each one of those emails.
You can't make decisions via an email chain, though. You need to do it at a meeting.
Every individual person emailed you and you're just not putting it all together as a collective group.
Correct, because there's not been a meeting and it has to be in a public meeting that it's done.
But we already did it in a public meeting.
And then, anyway, we're gonna have a meeting shortly for the other stuff. We can finish it up now.
So it's your choice. You're making a decision.
I am making a decision, yes.
That is, overrules the committee's decision, is what you're saying.
Unless there was a motion at that meeting, and there are meeting minute notes showing there was a motion at that meeting, the public has a right to know. It has to take place at a meeting. There's nothing that says you could vote via email and then ratify later. And it's unfortunate that it slows everything down, Andy, but I'm very clear on this going forward.
Tracy, it wasn't voted via there. It was agreed on by the board. It was kicked back here for our approval. We approved it. John continues to be uncomfortable with it and keeps raising question after question on it. The board has answered all of those questions and everybody is comfortable with it to move forward. So it's, it is, John has made a decision. That's fine. It will go back through that board. We will vote on it again at that, but this is, like, this is just dragging our feet to move forward on things.
In my opinion, the statements that were made to the Board of Selectmen were incorrect as to we add CEGIS compliance and therefore I don't feel that we can go ahead until the committee again reviews the fact that they're not getting CEGIS compliance. They thought they were and they're not.
They're getting email compliance in the cloud base.
No.
Yes.
What they're getting is, well, anyway, it's a technical dispute here, but they're not getting what they told the Board of Selectmen they were getting. And I think they need to be clear to the Board of Selectmen what they are getting.
I would like to turn around and move this Office 365 to have it on the agenda for the next meeting, please. In the meantime, I'd ask everybody to do that and then we will have the vote after. Dan, you have a comment?
Are they gonna have a meeting before then?
We will have a meeting before that.
If not, call a special one.
I don't want to order 365 until we have the new vendor on. Let's be clear on that one.
That, that will be part of everybody's discussion.
Well, that's what, if you have a meeting, make sure there's a meeting scheduled before then they answer. Everyone's on the same page.
Any other comments on software? Seeing that, we'll move on with the old business, the graduate fellowship position. I'd ask a select person, Hattie Croft, to make that presentation, please.
So at the last meeting, I presented a draft of a postgraduate public administration intern position. It would be for individuals who have graduated with masters in public administration degrees. I sent out a version to John and to the rest of the select board asking for any other input. There were two minor changes, one grammatical, one in adding the Department of Revenue to align for essential position functions. There was also a recommendation by the town administrator that I agreed with that we changed the physical abilities and environmental conditions, basically copying the ADA compliant portions from the current town administrator's job description to this. I also clarified that this position would not be benefits eligible. I also clarified that the internship or fellowship would be compensated and would take place between September of 2018 and April of 2019. Basically, the idea behind this is that instead of paying a head hunting group to vet potential applicants for the next town administrator's position, we'd be able to train two fellows, I use that term loosely, male or female, for the town administrator's position, somewhere between $36,000 and $43,000 would be the cost. Then the 36 and 43...
For the fellows?
For the two fellows. Basically, we would also be sending them to any of the MMA and H conference days and to any of the ICMA conferences, giving them exposure to all the different department heads for about a week at a time. The oversight of this could also involve looking at the different committees in town and sitting in on those throughout this timeframe. But basically, we'd allow the select board to choose at the end of this time, an applicant that we would hope has had nine months of experience and could hit the ground running. Again, I propose this because overall, the actual cost involved would be the same or less than what it would likely cost you to hire a head hunting group. I also think giving you choice in the matter is the reason I would suggest two fellows. Our town administrator has certainly indicated that would be a lot to handle and I understand that. But I also think that these two people, fresh out of school, knowing what they've taken for coursework, could add tremendous value to the town as well. So that's where we're at.
Select person, Hattie Croft, I'd like to thank you for taking the lead on this. I know I've passed it down to you on several occasions and I think you've done an outstanding job and I want to thank you very much. Is there any comments from the board, please? I'm looking for, I'm sorry.
I like individuals better than fellows.
Right, well...
It's simply called a fellowship. Internship, fellowship, it's...
It's a resume.
Dan?
Well, that gives me a fellow, like, you know, that seems like a name.
I think the fellowship is the description of the actual time spent.
Is there any, is there any comment I'm gonna bring up on the fact that there's two individuals?
No, it looks good.
Have motion for acceptance, sir?
John would like to comment?
Oh, John, I'm sorry, John. I'm gonna have to put a mirror so I can see you down there.
As Tracy mentioned, I don't feel I can properly help two at the same time. I think we have space needs issues. I think we have workload issues as far as taking two instead of one. I think there's a couple of other things to figure out. If you start September 1, ICMA is the third week of September. Registration starts this week, so we don't even, if, you're gonna, you know, as far as getting the person in there is, could be more of an issue just because of getting them signed up.
I think we'd simply register Town of Barrington intern for the two of them.
That's, you know, you...
I know it's an anomaly, I understand, but it's gonna be the best way for us to get experienced people who have the full depth of experience for that nine-month period of time.
I don't think you can sign up that way. That's why I, because you need to know whether they're a member or not a member because there's two different rates for the signup for ICMA. I'm just saying, two, the bigger issue I have is I do not think that, I think if we have two, neither one of them is going to benefit that much.
I think it's going to create an atmosphere that's slightly competitive and at the same time will allow us at the end of this process to choose the better of the two candidates. Or potentially, based on what we experience, a town administrator and assistant town administrator. There's, there's much more choice in this. And in reference to signing up for the conferences, given that these will be postgraduate individuals, they can sign up or we can sign them up under the student rates and certainly save significant money in the registration of the conference, giving them that experience right out of the gate.
Any other comments? Seeing that, we'll go ahead with this. Moving on, any other old business?
Does that mean we're supposed to advertise for two people?
Yes, it is.
Are you doing voter consensus?
I'm sorry, what? Hang on a minute.
So this asked if you're doing a voter consensus.
Oh, I'm, do a motion?
I think you had already done a motion.
Done a motion, we gotta vote for it. It's a vote that we're all set and it's all inside of his.
Did we have any vote on this?
We did all.
No, so I would make a motion to allocate up to $43,000 for two nine-month fellowships for post-graduates advertised through MMA and H, hopefully through the University of New Hampshire and potentially through ICMA as well, and let the select board review applications and choose two working candidates.
Second motion.
I'll start it off, Bailey, I.
Yeah, bye.
Article five?
Air Ride.
Motion carries.
I'd also make myself available, John, to help with some of the space needs and scheduling issues with this if it's helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we just, we're, we don't have room at the town hall for two at the same time.
I think we could probably get Mr. Corff to come in and help with that.
Mr. Who?
Corff, the gentleman that helped with the police department. He is a lean, lean manager that's we asked for a little...
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see how this is gonna work, but if that's what you want, we'll do it.
If it doesn't work out at all, we can always turn around and address it again and work from there. Any other old business? Seeing that, we'll go to new business, tricentennial fund and committee. What I'm gonna ask the board to consider for the celebration and for the 300th year is that I would like to put two individuals forward to you that these two individuals will work together to select a committee for the 300th celebration. And then they would turn around and bring these candidates that they have selected to the board for final approval so they can work on that. What I'd suggest is that we have Joel Sherbon and Fire Chief Rick Walker to be the two to start off with and those two to meet and pick a committee. And I don't know whether we want to have eight on the committee or do you want to have 10 because we've got a, you know, that's something we need, should say how many we want. And then after we go down the road, we'll turn around and ask a select person who wants to be on that committee as the liaison. But right now, I'm looking to get this started. I know it's early.
Four years?
I've had, let me finish, please. I've had comments telling me that I am working early, but I don't think that early is gonna hurt us. It's better than being late. And, you know, some of these items or individuals or groups that they might want to get probably work on two or three-year, you know, booking dates. Comments on those two individuals? Dan?
We're four years out.
Yes.
I agree with your decision. If you need a motion, I will gladly make that motion.
I'd second that motion.
If, if, if I say this is not important, he says this. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead of that. You're gonna need a second motion, but why don't you finish that one first?
Air Ride.
Article five?
Hatchet I. Yeah, bye.
Bailey, I, five, carries.
I would like to suggest that the board vote to establish the Barrington Tricentennial Trust. And in the motion, all donations received, including income earned, will be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of the tricentennial celebration under RSA 3119 and 3132 to permit expenditure without further authorization at town meeting.
So moved? I move the motion, John, just stay. You have a second? Discussion, please. Dan?
What's that?
I'm excited. I think it'll be a great event for the town.
Oh, I am too. I think, I think we're getting an early start. I think there's, there's gonna be so much to be there. I said we have two strong individuals that are gonna go the, I think that'll work.
They are both on board with this?
Yes, they are.
Leadership role, right?
Yes, they are. I've talked to them ahead of time. And I must say that the response was, was great and I think that the two of them work together. And then after they decide about the committee, the committee is really something that I'm looking forward to see who they select. So I, I will vote yes on the motion for the expenditures and the expansion plan that John just asked.
So Bailey, I.
Bailey, I.
Yeah, bye.
Article five?
Air Ride.
There we go. We have it. So I have your funding on there, Rick, to be all set. Any other new business?
Well, he has to get donations before he's all set.
Donation funding, so I don't know if I'd say it's...
You have your cup with you, you can stand with it. All right, seeing that, there's no other new business. Select persons report concerns. One of the things that you notice on the end of this is the word concerns. What, what we're going to do is I've noticed that sometimes that I, I myself do this. I will sit in public, chat with one ears, one-on-one or after the meeting or what have you, and discuss some of my concerns, all this and your concerns. And it's totally legal, we're doing it, it's only one-on-one. But what I'd like to do is to move forward so people can get a better understanding if the board agrees is that, of how we're thinking, things that we would like to see, you know, to talk about, not necessarily to make a motion and go through the vote here, but there might be some items. One of the items that, just say for myself, I could bring for concern, well, is a beach to go swim. That might be a concern you could talk about, discuss where it could happen and what have you. Or we have other ones. And so this is what I'm saying, but in no, in no way do I mean for this concerns to be a vehicle in which you can destroy an individual's character. I want to make that perfectly clear. This is not a hate place to go. I want to make it go that way. So concerns can be how we do our running of the town. Does anybody object to that? Thank you. That worked out well, John. First one on there is select person, air.
What do you want to know?
This is a selectmen's report, air concerns. If you don't have any, you can just say it.
I have a conservation, Lance comes in to meeting this week, I believe, at seven. Has to be confirmed yet.
I don't know yet.
Yeah, it has to be confirmed, though.
Yeah, somebody's got it.
And then the conservation's meeting Thursday.
Anything else?
No.
Select person, Hattie Croft?
So I'm the liaison for the rec department and I know that publicly, two things have occurred since the last select board meeting. One of them was the participation by town residents in reference to the future of the rec department, what the town needs were, what the projections were, and then a report out took place. The other big piece of what's happening with the rec department is that our playground is being revised. And I very much appreciated that the rec department really addressed the volunteers that did so much work putting in the original wooden playground and that they are preserving the list of names, the bricks that were used to honor the people that both funded and built that playground. The last thing with the rec department, we brought up during the needs assessment, the ability for the rec department to provide scholarships to those families with the socioeconomic...
the ability for the rec department to provide scholarships to those families with the socioeconomic need for before and after-school care or summer camp. And I did touch base with the assistant director of the rec department, Jessie, and she did make clear to me that Tara handles those situations on a case-by-case basis, and I will return to her and just ask that they provide the total number of family members each year that are provided with scholarship care for those, for those rec programs.
I'm just, just the highlighted part?
Oh, you want, and that the site work on the playground is beginning this week, that the previous play structure will be removed next week, June 11th, beginning, and that we hope to have the new play structure in place June 17th, and that the summer camp starts June 25th, so hopefully they'll be able to experience a beautiful new playground that's very ADA compliant and built on universal design, which I think is important for embracing all children.
Select person, Hartikoff, thank you very much, especially the news.
Just a minute, please.
Especially on the scholarships, I really, you might not know, but I really, really thank you.
Yeah, that was great.
Do you have a copy that needs assessment? I wanted to read, read the needs, strategic planning needs assessment.
The one that we reported out?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but Tara can provide one, I'm sure.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have that back? Select, select person, Hatch?
We haven't had a meeting, but Asher informs me that we have three hearings for next week, so.
20th.
20th, yes, that's right, I'm getting my month on. So we will be having zoning board meeting on the 20th.
Thank you very much. Select question, Dan?
There was no meeting, there have been no meetings since our last meeting. There are cases before the board tomorrow, so there will be, I won't get into all the details of them, but we are reviewing the 125 lot, and there are a couple of creation, or a singular creation of a new lot before the board. Also, I may not be able to attend tomorrow's meeting, just so you know, which I would be abstaining from the 125 piece anyway, just because I have a family issue that may prohibit me from attending. Not completely sure on that at this moment. And I also would like to say, I did, both my wife and I and my son attended the Futures of the Rec participation, and it was really well organized and well-run, and we had a very great time. So, thank you.
How was the turnout?
Well, I think it was right around what they were targeting, it was probably like 15 or 20 people.
Any other comments on Dan?
So, you want me to go tomorrow in?
Yeah, if I can, I'll send you a note tomorrow, I'll know better tomorrow, just because my wife is out of town for work.
Thank you. On the look, I'm gonna report on the library, they had their sale on Saturday, perennial sale, as you know, Sam didn't have all the figures to go, and so we don't have any information on that, I'll get that after the next meeting, but what I understand, it was far superior than last year, so I wish him the high count on that.
That was the Friends of the Barrington Public Library.
Friends of the Barrington Public Library, yes, and that, you're part of that.
I, I'm a member, I've paid my $5 due, or whatever they charge, but.
That's, that's, that counts, it goes a long way.
Just one other thing, if Dan did attend, he would have to also abstain from the 125.
I know that.
Okay, I just.
The, the other issue is, is that, as you know, I, I do work with veterans, the DAB's going to have their annual news to the veterans, it's going to be on Tuesday, June 19th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Bunny Bell, Bell Hermier Veterans Center in Dover on 156 Black River Road. What they do is, you have veterans that need to have, how do I pronounce it?
It's Back River.
Back River.
Back River Road. Thank you. And then what is gonna be from, like I said, 9:00, so if you have veterans that need some type of service, and they're not sure that they're entitled to the service, they can go there, and this mobile service office will be there for that time and be able to answer their questions. The last time it was at, last year was at Janatos, and there was a lot of individuals that would help, I really like people to see that. With that, I have no more. We are going to go into a non-public session, and tonight, it's under personnel. When we come out, the only vote will be for either to seal or not to seal the minutes, and there'll be no other meeting concerns. If the individuals here would like to stay and wait to hear that, be more than welcome to it. So I, I would like to.
Just wanted to mention the fishing game, I think tomorrow night, they're coming to the Historical Society Building to go over and talk about, we've got a beautiful black bear population in the town of Barrington right now, and the fishing game are filling us in on how and what we should be doing to protect both the bears and ourselves, and that's tomorrow night at the Historical Society.
Yes, I, I had a visit last night, early, and they are getting down on Chedson Drive, so they're there.
I do have a question, it falls under the concerns space, I guess. I'm just curious when the turtle signs are going up on.
They're up, they've been up for a while.
Oh, I missed it then. So I missed it.
They've been up for over a month.
So may I have a, may I have a motion to go into non-public session?
Public comment? Oh, yeah, one last public comment, yeah.
I skipped that, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any public comment they want to make?
I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, we understand.
Casey O'Brien, $24. I, I wanted to bring up that, going through the tax maps today, the gentleman that applied for the waiver on Chrissy Circle is not a resident nor homeowner, so giving him a waiver to light off fireworks in the town, we don't give fire permits out to people who rent unless they have a letter with it, so I'm just kind of curious how all that works.
He had his mother with him, she owns it.
Okay, but she didn't apply, she didn't apply for the permit, correct?
No, he's the one who sent it.
That's all I'm getting at, if, if you're gonna let anybody.
No, you're not wrong in saying that, John, why don't we send a letter out asking her to just, asking her to update the letter and providing it in her name, you're not wrong.
No, I just, I can remember the rule, but, and I don't mean to say it without him here, it's just there was no public comment when it came up, so I apologize.
You just, guys, just had a conversation on the tricentennial. I'd like to thank you for excluding the people that were here as kids back then, and deciding who sits on a committee about having the tricentennial. Very important to me. We had discussions with people my age around town. We were formally gonna get together in November, we had all the folks that were here the last time, that actually worked on a committee, that were gonna intertwine with us. For lack of a better way to put it, I think this is one thing that the Board of Selectmen should keep their fingers out of, so we don't get screwed up.
Peter, in response to that, eight to 10 members will be on that committee?
It doesn't matter, you got.
Peter, come to the speaker, please.
We got, we got over probably 60 of us kids that were here then, and we're gonna, we're gonna narrow it down and tell 40 of them, they, they're not all probably want to be on it anyways, but we're gonna tell these kids who are interested in doing this, that we're only gonna have a committee of eight.
Chief Walker, since you and Joel would be heading up the committee, would it be a great idea to take in applications for all people that would want to serve on that committee? I'm sure that throughout that day and that celebration, there'll be plenty for 60 people to do. Is that okay, Peter?
You've already decided, and whatever he, you know, I mean, it's just.
I do, please come to the speaker.
It was done with Ron. That's Nick.
Anyway, we've already.
Maybe he said it earlier, we all have our right to our opinion, that's my opinion.
We asked that they select eight to 10 people and bring the list to us, they have their work cut out, that we didn't say for the next meeting, so that's why we have it set up that way, it'll be a fine committee to work at. Now, there's an opportunity for anybody to go there, but that has been put in the hands of Rick and Joel, and that's how it's been, the Board of Selectmen have nothing to do with that, except for the final approval of the individuals that are on there. And so if they're not on the list, when they give it to us, and there's no way that we can say yea or nay.
You just said you're narrowing it down to eight, that's gonna be a lot.
No, eight to 10, I said they submit the name. If they think it should be 12, they could put 12. Thank you. I know that, I shouldn't do that. Yes, Dan?
It's gonna be advisory board, and it's open to the public, anyone in the public, we even think of it, rent a field and have the whole town go there, and you're gonna put, if we want to. It's not, do not narrow it down to certain people, every meeting, open to the public.
Any further comment, Chief?
I think this is 41.
I mean, believe it or not, there's people that, that are, you know, that actually set up the last one that want to help set up this one, you know, and if we narrow it down to 12, we're cutting a lot of people out of that that want to be involved in this, in the town. We keep talking about community, these people were born and brought and lived here, and born and brought up here, and we can't, we can't involve them in this? 300 is a big deal.
Thank you, Peter. Chief?
I, I don't disagree with what Peter said, and I was, Peter and I have had a lot of conversations about involving people, older people that are in town, newer people, and I, I personally have the opinion that, again, I understand the concept of getting started and trying to work on, put a warrant article together to start saving a little bit of money each year over the next three years, to do whatever it is the townspeople want, and while I respect the fact that you had said eight or 12 people, I, my full intention was to, if 25 people want to be part of this committee, then we'll figure out how to make it work. We'll have a bunch of subcommittees and stuff like that. I agreed to kind of help Joel, just, more or less, just to get this started. I think that once you get it up and running, and I agree with, with Peter, that if 30 people want to do this, then we'll, you know, we'll, there's gonna be more than enough where for a whole bunch of people. I, I'm not in support of holding it down to 10 or 12 necessarily, if, if that's all that end up ultimately wanting to be on the committee, there will, Peter's right, there'll be people that want to help out with it, but don't necessarily want to be on the committee, or, or don't want to be a committee member, and that's okay. I, I'm 100% with Peter. I remember what it was like in 1972, had a great time, and, you know, I think a few people, Peter, myself, and some of the older people, some of the younger people, I think we can put a really good committee together and have a celebration that the town's proud of, and, again, when I agreed to kind of poke at the ball rolling was so that we could get, again, I, I'm not in favor of trying to do something, some of it is busy, but in the fall, trying to get people together and get ideas, I think there's many, many ideas on the table, and, again, if I come back here with 25, or I or Joel or somebody comes back here with 25 names, I would fully expect you would support that and accept all 25 names, and let us figure out how we're gonna handle 25 people, or 30 people or 50, but.
Chief, I appreciate your comments, but one thing, you made a statement, is the chairman for that committee will be out of, will elect their chairperson, so if you pick 12 people, or if you come back with 25, it'd be up to the people that you and Joel put together for this committee, and then together, you all vote as to who you want to have, the chair, co-chair.
I absolutely 100% agree with that. That was my direct from the beginning, too.
That was not in my notes, because when I took my notes off of one agenda and put it on for another one, that didn't make it, and I noticed it with the comments you made, so I apologize for that aspect of it.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I view this, Peter, as they've appointed a steering committee, now they've got a lot of volunteers they're gonna be looking for, and certainly that's where this whole group that you're talking about comes in, as well as they can volunteer to be on the steering committee.
Like I said before, it was my opinion, nobody in this room got more passion for this town than I got, and I'm sick of having to say that. Number one, you said a day, when we were kids, it lasted a week. There was a beer contest, there was a beauty contest, there was, there was, there was bus tours around town, there was, and I realize times have changed, but I don't think it should be narrowed down to eight-hour day, or, I think, I think there's a lot of smart people in this town, and a lot of people who actually really want to be part of this, because it is a big deal, and they're not gonna see it again. I'm not gonna see 350, you know, Ricky's not gonna see 350 neither. You know, I mean, it, it's a, it's a big deal.
Peter, your passion for things comes, comes through loud and clear, and I don't think in any way that the select board was trying to squelch anyone's passion for it, is, that, that was my whole response.
Well said, well said. Any other public comments?
Yeah, I'm John Hawkins, and I'm here speaking totally as a resident of the town. The internship program, I understand where you're coming at, but to say we're gonna take a college kid and make that person become the leader of this community, and they're gonna stay in the community, what I'm afraid of, what happened to see with administrators' advantages throughout the years, is they usually do like a five-year span. So you're gonna take a college kid, which is great for him to come in and learn something from the town. Experience is what you need for leadership. Experience comes from making mistakes, so you're gonna take some green kid, you're gonna have him come in, make his mistakes in this town, and then he moves on and takes his experience and get his job someplace else. Well, there's a lot of people that have experience on managing things, and they came in and they wanted to do part-time, because they already have a retirement thing through the NHMA. Well, as, the reason why they have to be part-time is because the town requires that all the, you know, all the people that work full-time, so, stay into that program for the retirement. You can exempt the town administrator out, and a town administrator can work full-time, even if they already got a pension. So what happens then is you're getting the person that's already come up through, that already has experience, that can be the leader for that town for that five years or six years, which typically is your life term of what a city manager or a administrator is. So, that's my concern of taking a college kid to be the leader of the town. I just, Mike, I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
Chair Daly, could I respond to that?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. The average age in the cohort that I just graduated from, at your age, was 25 to 33 years old, none of them are 22-year-old children. Most of them have held professional positions and returned to school, and I think John can speak to the fact that many people who enter Masters in Public Administration Policies not only aren't just men, there's women, and also that they tend to enter that particular field later on in life after they've already had plenty of business experience. Does that sound about right, John?
I was just concerned with.
I hear your concerns, I understand that this board, this board would be at over 33 applications of people who did not have town administrator experience, and chose to take this path in order to both save money and to find the most qualified and educated candidate.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
You have something, Dan?
I would respond to that, too. What is going on with retirement hours? I'm sure I asked state waters, they won't change the hours down to 20 hours a week for by-time people, or 26, the change here, there's something from legislation about getting rid of 32 hours.
Is that Bill Bass?
Yes. Yes, they, the legislature cut back the number of hours, I'm grandfathered, but for going forward, there is a reduction in the number of hours, but as John Hawkins pointed out, the board, there is an exemption for the manager position coming in. If you wanted to hire a retired person, you could hire one full-time, and they wouldn't lose their state retirement if you follow the right procedure at the point of hiring them, you can't do it after the fact, it has to be when they're hired. So, the reduction in hours, the biggest impact for most towns is gonna be in the police department, because it will restrict how long retired officers can come back and work. So, example, we have Scott Young, he's working the maximum, close to the maximum that he can work, he's not gonna be affected because he's grandfathered, but the next one we hired after the effective date, and I'm not sure what the, I don't know if the governor has signed it yet, but I expect he will, would have to have less hours than that. But, less hours, but it's been spread over a longer period of time. I don't want to go into the details, because. I don't wanna go into the details, 'cause it just, you know.
Any other, any other public comment? All right, as I said earlier, I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public session for personnel reputation. Motion. Selectmen, that?
Air, aye.
Hold a second.
Air, aye.
Napa, aye.
Article five?
Bailey, aye. Thank you.